The regular meeting for Thursday, June 23rd, 2022 is called to an order. Please, by, will please do roll call. Roll call. Councilmember White.
President.
Councilmember Sten.
President.
Councilmember Amerusa.
President.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
President.
Mayor Kleinfilter. Thank you. Would you please, please stand before the pledge of allegiance? Okay, Peter.
I do mean this to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just as well.
Thank you. We do not have an impotential seating. I would entertain a motion for approval of the city council. Regular meeting agenda is for June 23rd, 2022.
May I motion to approve the agenda after then? Second.
Roll call. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Sten.
Aye.
Councilmember Amerusa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfilter. Aye. Thank you. I don't know if three on the agenda is public comment. Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda, they do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's submitted form to the same clerk or following the COVID-19 advisory instructions noted on the first page of this agenda. When the item will be heard, speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and please state your name and community of residence, but not doing so is not required. Under provisions of government, California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature where urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have anyone in City Hall that would like to comment on the public comment? Hi.
Hi. My name is Curtis Spurling, resident here of Plymouth. My wife and I own three properties on Mill Street. The old day of sons of the older west hall. Big adjoining property, other property as well. The addresses are 18561 Mill. For some reason, 18550 Pumper. And we're working on that. And 18523 Mill. I pay for three water meters at this time, one for main residence, which varies. The other two meters are $13 change each, but they're locked. I can't have access to them. So I spoke with. You know, this choice.
Sorry.
Enjoy. It's warned me that I could not unlock those meters because there's no residence there. There was a residence in the property, but when we, like we modeled it, it's just an old miner's shack. One inch thick walls, it's had to take it all the way down. So the foundation's still there. We, if you don't know the property, we've did excavating of the middle property, but the cost of building right now is so absorbent, it's just prohibitive to do anything with that property. However, I would like to at least landscape purchase something on there to keep the dust that had been home from the four year olds, averages and such. And to do so, I can't leave my house water. I have to use the water that goes to that property. So Joyce said for me that she would email me the code that says there must be a residence to actually unlock the water meter. And that's been three weeks ago, I've contacted her many times, but no response. So I'm requesting that my meters be unlocked so that I could use the right water for the right property for this.
During public comment, we can entertain a discussion on the item. But if it's not something that's absolutely routine and you're informing us of something, we can agenda it for a future agenda. So first of all, Kathleen's right here and she's writing down for Joyce to call you. And then second of all, would you like this placed on an agenda for a full discussion?
Yes, that's the problem. See, I would. I've been informed, why don't you just conjoin the property? That's the best I should have done. That's what I had three.
Parcels.
Parcels with three waters, three stores and three towers. I could afford to combine them to the waters.
Those properties are pretty famous here around.
We've been working for it. We put quite a bit of money and time into it. We're still working on that. We restored it back to its 1950s. Basically, stands with transit doors and all that sort of thing. 1950, it's called, it seems, near the old forum and all that. So we just want to move forward. We just want to be sold. And I can't use a property to, you know, mend another property.
Okay, so it'll be placed on an agenda. If you, when Joyce calls you, if you provide her with your email address or your home address, which she probably has this water bills. And we'll make sure that you get an agenda so you know where it is on the agenda. So thank you very much.
Very interesting. Second half, people with both in here.
Yeah. Sure, there's nobody waiting in line. Nobody waiting down the door.
Yes, everybody knows those culverts were putting across the 49, which was very enjoyable for a few months of Jack Henry to meet. We are pretty close to the main road. However, that culvert across from the people that own livery, like Amherst 66, more like front of our house, now has become a cesspool. It's just a lake of green slime. It doesn't go anywhere. It just sits or created a water problem. Didn't, a big trouble, problem a lot of. So if it can't be excavated for proper fall to eliminate it, at least maybe treat it for the insect infestation that we now have across these water holes, which is quite annoying.
Here's what I, I'm gonna propose. We're gonna have Joyce look at it and contact you about, you know, we can both chat. Do you have more time that way? About what's going on. You can meet her out there, but you know. And then she'll let us know whether she thinks it's something that needs to come to council. So we'll let you know about both items. Okay, thank you.
And that was a Caltrans project. It wasn't a city project.
Yeah, I just didn't know who to ask. We never had.
It might, it might have to be Caltrans because it's their, their right way.
Yeah, it was a subcontractor.
Yes. Just correction on Friday. I want to talk. Do you own the parcel on Poplar? You have another property that looks like some, no, I approach it.
Thanks, Kate, guys.
We can't get into this. I appreciate it, I appreciate it, but you should probably connect.
Here we go.
Right. This is Matt, our engineer. Just wait a minute. Is there any more public comment inside of City Hall? Is there any public comment on Zoom if you'd like to speak? Please, please press nine?
Star nine.
Star nine, and it'll wave.
Nobody.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comments evening. So item number five on the agenda is the consent calendar. I think Vice Mayor might have some things you'd like to talk about minutes.
At the previous meeting, we had received email from Carol Emerson regarding item 7.1. And Ms. Emerson had asked about the radar safety signs and the whereabouts of those signs that were apparently purchased from ACTC in 2019. And I don't see where that was reflected in the minutes. And we, we didn't take any action or anything, but we did receive her email. On, I think, June 9th.
Yeah, she sent an email about that on the June 9th. So I think Vice Mayor just asking that we reflect the minutes.
What I'd like to do, if it's appropriate, frankly, is what we have. Something that is a substantive change to the minutes instead of like a typo or something, a comma. I'd like it to be placed on the following agenda so that the public packet has what we was missing.
If the council's whether they can make that, they can make the change with the direction to come back or make the change smaller without the council's direction to give on that.
Anybody have a problem with putting them up to next meeting? I just think the public would like.
I don't think it's necessary, but yeah.
Yeah. The public will see it that way instead of it being, oh, we remember you did that. We're gonna add it. So, okay, thank you. Anything else on the consent calendar? I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar with the minute, meeting minutes for June 9th carry over to the next meeting.
They can motion to approve the consent calendar with the corrections to the minutes and bring it to be brought back on the next agenda. I guess everyone.
I'll say that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with the minor changes. Can we have a roll call though, please? There's a resolution. Roll call. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Sten.
Aye.
Councilmember Amerusa. Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfilter.
Aye. Thank you.
Item 7.1 on the agenda is point, devoting Public Works Director Johnson as acting city manager for an additional weekly stipend of $350 until the city manager position is filled. Do you want to?
Yes, I'll make a few great comments. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As we know, there's been some changes at the city manager position. We recently had Mr. Chapman, who everyone knew was in the air for a short term basis and he did get the employment. There had been discussions, it's my understanding, between him and Kathleen before. And there was, and I think it was referenced at the last council meeting that Mr. Johnson would be willing to step up. I think the city's appreciative of her efforts that she's kind of shoulder to take on. And so this is, the city does contemplate an acting city manager role. And so this gives the council the opportunity to officially make that appointment. And in recognition of that, there is an additional stipend that she would be eligible for as noted in the agenda.
My question is, why, why did they cut it in the form of a stipend? And is it equal to what we were paying a previous acting city manager? Do I still have a question?
That was gonna be one of my questions.
Yeah, I'll do my best to answer that. I wasn't here when these conversations had occurred, but what my understanding was, I'm trying to answer this because I know the individuals to my media, right? And I, I don't want to make this, I won't make this as least offer responsible. It's my understanding there was a conversation. Now, since learned, since the agenda was posted, that maybe things were, the conversations weren't exactly as I thought they were, but I thought there was an understanding as to this between Mr. Chapman and Ms. Johnson. Maybe there was some confusion as far as that goes or misunderstanding. I don't think the intent was to, I don't know if there was any analysis of what the city managers had been making versus what she's making. I think the idea was this is gonna be an acting role. So it's, it's more along the lines of a point of contact. Let me just contemplate an acting city manager from among the existing people. And so the idea is it's gonna be very, very, very short term. I think with the previous interims, we were hoping to be indefinite and as long, as long as possible. And there was a conversation that had taken place regarding the amounts of the salary expectations. I thought that conversation had occurred here as well. So I guess what I'm saying is, very candidly, I don't know that there was any analysis done with respect to that. I know there was no intent to, to do anything. It was just an attempt to try to fill an acting role on it or basis as very short term as possible. I don't want to talk out of school again because I have Ms. Johnson to my media, right? But I do think that this is something that may be revisited if, if the workload and the responsibilities are such that the stipend is frankly not cutting it. And so the conversation I had with, with her again helped me if I'm speaking out of her. But, well, as I said, I told her, I said, if, you know, once this appointment happens, if we need to revisit it and we need to ask council, we need to ask council for it because you've had a chance to live in the role and filling and taking our responsibilities, then we can certainly approach the council if we need to. So these are all, as you know, this has been a kind of a moving target the last week we can have with such turnover. And so we're all doing our best to try to steady the ship. And so if there are some growing pains or transition pains, you know, I have spoken with Ms. Johnson and she understands that she's, she's, she has a really good team, team attitude, team perks attitude, but she's also realistic in those responsibilities require in her mind, an additional amount. And, and we can, we can, you know, that's something that conversation that can happen still. So I guess that's all, that's the best I can probably answer those questions at this point.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up to the floor at City Hall. Does anyone have a comment on this agenda? I'm going to request that anyone wave using star nine if they are on Zoom and would like to address the council on this agenda. There. Okay, council. I, I also want to thank Ms. Johnson, Kathleen, for your willingness to do this. I feel like as a, as a council member, the right thing to do, and even though I realize this is short term, and if it's, say it's a month, you could skate through and it's smooth sailing regardless. Somebody has stepped up and is willing to do this. And I, I feel like the right thing to do is, is to ensure that the compensation is on par with what we have offered or what we have provided previous city staff who, who were willing to step in as interim. You're, somebody is willing to do this. And it's the, the money has been budgeted, so I don't see that as an issue. There, there could be something major that happens tomorrow, you know, who knows? That's what I, I would feel most comfortable with and what I think is the right thing to do. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. And to also consider, is, is this appropriate? Would this be appropriate to be, to compensate somebody in the form of a stipend? Certainly not my area of expertise, but stipend versus salary, seems like a stipend. Somebody still has to pay tax on it, but if it's salary, you at least can do, the person at least gets the benefit of the social security credits if I'm understanding that correctly. Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I wanted to, I just, my first and foremost question is, if Ms. Johnson is, is okay with this amount of money. Obviously, money is very short, could be a very short period of time. I presume you discussed this with senior manager, Chapman, pardon. And if you're, you're satisfied with this, this amount of money, or can you make some kind of comment on that? How do you feel about this?
Just for the record, excuse me. No money was ever discussed in any conversations I ever had.
So where did this number come from, right?
I, I, I found out about this amount when I read the journal.
Oh, okay.
So this was news to me.
All right. First, I feel this is fair.
I think that's. If, if you want a, like, honest opinion.
Yes, honest opinion.
I really don't think it's fair. I think it's about half of what the myth before me, what we see here. I'm not, I'm not here to make.
No.
A big problem. I'll be straight up honest with you. I, I told Stefan I would do this. And the main reason I chose to do this was that I don't know if everyone knows this, but the city of Plymouth right now has pretty small of staff. And they're going through a lot. You know, every time we make a change, it's hard. And we've made a lot of hard changes in the past few years. And I, you know, some staff members asked me to do this. But I, I think I'm pretty safe in saying that most of them would prefer me to do this until we get an actual city manager rather than having to go through yet another interim, another interim, another interim. At least, you know, we kind of group together and, and work together as a team. And we know each other well. And there's not stress of, you have one more new manager coming in. So I mean, that, that was basically where I was coming from when I, when I chose to do this.
I, I personally felt this was an awful, small amount of money. But this is perfect for you to go ahead and take on this responsibility and right now.
I'm gonna reel this back in a little bit because it almost feels like we're negotiating.
We don't have time to kind of post session about this.
Salaries.
Yeah. She can have what you have, especially if she's getting set, she's, to be set, she's comfortable with it. I realize it's a delicate matter, but I'm gonna ask her before she responds, if she wanted me to, 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 not believe the way I guess. I was trying to be a little bit high level in the earlier comments, but I think that, I do think there just is, in my conversation with her, is she's willing to do it. She told Stefan she was willing to do it. I don't think there's any dollar amounts discussed at the time. But I do think direction that would be higher would be appropriate. And, you know, like I said, it kind of was a, as a vanity, we had discussed revisiting this out here a few days, but I think it's lower compensation than, than it merits, in my opinion.
Thank you. I agree. One of the things that I was looking most for is parity. And that where the title is the same and the compensation is the same. And because I don't want to get into a position where the city can possibly be have fingers pointed at them because we pay women less and we don't, and we're not going to. And so parity is very important to me. So how can we make a motion to carry this out without this stipend amount? And we can bring it back for parity when we know what that amount is.
Council, if council's inclined, you can give direction and then we can come back at the next council meeting and go to back wages or whatever the sales score. It doesn't have to be addressed right now. So the idea is give direction, come back, sell score pretty easily.
Have you come to open that, Kathleen? Yes, I'm playing with that. Okay, thank you.
I would definitely like to say something on this, so there because when I saw this on the agenda, I was like, I think it makes the city, it makes the city look sexist. That's my opinion about it.
I can bring a candy bar for you.
Candy, candy bar. You gotta pay people with the words. And I, I think we all got your back. I don't know how to put that in any way, you know, and just my.
And I would just like to say for the record, the public, we're dealing with conversations essentially based on hearsay and second hand. I think, you know, Kathleen's being gracious, trying to be a player. I think we're all recognizing that, you know, this is what happens when there's transitions, kind of slipped through the cracks and there was no town in council, no direction by anyone I know on city staff who wanted to do this. So, yeah, I just want to make that clear for, for everyone.
Are you saying we can't make a decision tonight to, to change the, her conversation here tonight?
Yeah, you can provide direction, alternatives to that. I.
I think. So, this, this committee, I think we all feel that this is, this is unfair, this amount.
Would, would this be something, would this be considered like some type of, if we move in that direction, it sounds like we're headed, that this would be some type of salary negotiation that would take place at close?
that this would be some type of salary negotiation that would take place in a close session?
Well, I mean, we could do that. The other thing is, um, you could direct me to discuss uh, uh, and look at, look at what, I mean, I, I'm talking ahead, I don't even know what parity would look like. I have to look at the actual numbers and have a discussion. I'm not a finance person, so I'm not going to pretend to be one. And then have a conversation with Ms. Johnson. And then I think with the direction, we could just come back to open session. I don't think we need to drag this out, um, in more closed sessions. I think the direction, if the direction from council is work with Ms. Johnson to come up with a, a salary that is in parity with our, it's hard to determine what parity is because we just had a Stefan who was at sixteen hour. And then we had Michael who was at something different, directions something different, and I know per hours are not forty hours. So the point is, we will work together to collaborate on what we think is fair based upon the recent examples and come up with something to bring back to council and if I get a consensus on that, then we can do that. And then we can make those wages, uh, that difference in wages retroactive
Yes.
To today or to, yeah.
But we can make the motion to change the time, temporary change of time for this. And then giving you direction would also include, um, instead of this being a stipend, having a salary?
Yeah, I'll have to
Having part of the conversation.
Yes, yes. I understood that's the intent from at least, uh, some of the members and we'll work on that. I gotta discuss with whoever I can about how, logistically how that happens, but we'll look at that. Yeah.
I would, I would just like to thank the council through, for looking into this and, and understanding, you know, where I'm coming from. Um, I'm more than happy to be the team player in here at all. Uh, I've been at Plymouth thirteen years and it is my second home. And I really do care about Plymouth. But I, I think you can all understand that, that it's also, you know, we all, we all have our, our personal things that we need to stand up for too. And, um, I want to do a good job for you until you can play a permanent city manager, I do. And I want to work with the new city manager to get things moving along as smoothly as we can. And I, I really do appreciate recognizing that. Unfortunately, um, there's kind of been a pattern of people moving up and taking on new responsibilities within the city and not always getting any compensation for that. And that might be part of the reason why this, this hit me a little harder. Um, because I've had that experience and I know there are some other employees that have that experience as well. And we have quite a few, um, employees that will step up and have stepped up, but that's not always acknowledged. So at least I won't acknowledge them, um, for doing everything they can to keep the city running, especially when we're such, such shorthanded in staff right now. But thank you so much for your understanding. Thank you very much, Kathleen, for, and thank you for putting up with this because it, it was getting squishy. And, uh, and you, you've been a brave soul. So, um, I would entertain a motion on reclassifying the deputy public works director as the acting city main manager.
Yeah, it's good enough. Yeah.
May I just clarify something too, that that's an old title for me. I'm actually the director of public works now. And then apparently there's a title on the agenda. I saw the inconsistencies between the staff reports and the agenda, so I was thinking. Waiting for motion, guys.
Make a motion to, uh, have, uh, Ms. Johnson talk with, uh, our attorneys and come up with a agreeable number and come back to us at the next meeting.
And reclassify it as
Reregulative. Yes, and retroactive payback. I say.
It's been first and second to, to, uh, reclassify the public works director Kathleen Johnson as the acting city manager. And to bring back a negotiated, um, amount of compensation retroactive till tonight's meeting. Roll call, please. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Sin?
Aye.
Councilmember Marissa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Klinebelter?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven point two of the agenda is a resolution authorizing the continuing appropriations and expenditures on the basis of the previous fiscal year, which is twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two. Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three until the adoption of the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. Is, I have a question before we go to the audience. Or, so the resolution is strictly for the same amounts of expenditure? It's not an increase ten percent or?
Essentially, the, yes, essentially the purpose of this resolution is to make sure that for our fiscal year ends, that we have in place the status quo as far as appropriations for expenditures, um, to ensure that we comply with California constitution, which requires cities not to, um, bank on future, uh, to not essentially guaranteed to pay things in a fiscal year for which it has not properly appropriated. So that this is kind of a stopgap until that, uh, budget is adopted.
Would anyone in City Hall like to speak on this agenda item? Anyone on Zoom, please press star nine and it'll wave and you'll be recognized. Any comments, questions from the council? Then I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty two twelve.
I make a motion to approve resolution two zero two two dash twelve as presented. A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty twenty two dash twelve. Um, roll call vote, please. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Sin?
Aye.
Councilmember Marissa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Klinebelter?
Aye.
Thank you. Item seven point three on the agenda is review and discussion regarding the sale of fireworks within the city limits and use of certain fireworks on July fourth. It's, this is Kathleen? That's me. Um, yeah, I wanted to make sure we were on this, on the same page with fourth of July. And traditionally, uh, the Department of Mountain, so understand selling fireworks, we allow a public to light off the safety saving fireworks on Main Street and have a little event on July fourth. Uh, David and I, and I have been working on that. She's, she's been working really hard on this. Uh, the mountain, do you want to sell fireworks like us today? They've already put the stand up. Um, oh no.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Oops. There it is.
Yeah, there was a little bit of confusion on the code for this. And, uh, some past city managers have referred back to the code that they have the authority to approve the sale of the fireworks. But I did not feel comfortable doing that without coming before you and making sure that, that the council was okay with that game plan still. Um, we went ahead with what we've done in the past. Uh, so we were planning on the mountain and setting our safety saving fireworks and allowing people to light them on Main Street on fourth of July, as we've done in the past. We, um, have an agreement with someone to come out and provide music from six to eight P M. We've also, um, have four, uh, mobile food vendors that would like to participate this year, which I thought would be nice. We could get, uh, food out there for people who want to come listen and save for fireworks. But I'm a mom with a young kid myself and I know that that would make it a lot easier to come down and feed them and then do fireworks because they can get crazy. Uh, Bluestone Pizza and No Man Adventures Eats, Asian Taste and Ranch Grill Friday have all, um, come forward and are interested and want to participate. So it's a pretty wide variety of choices there. Um, we've got people in all the public plaza spaces that want to be there. Uh, we've moved forward on the, the non-sovereign things, but we've arranged for our Aces' stomachs or a couple of porta potties. I've also been in contact with the sheriff. I'm trying to work something out with them and if we can give a little extra detail that night.
Be easy like that.
Last year, I hear it was quite a big crowd. Um, so I'm trying to work with them so that we might have a little more beverage than usual in case we might need it. I'm hoping if anybody has any questions or concerns. Well, I want to kind of dial it back into the agenda item a little bit because the only thing that's on the agenda is fireworks. Is the sale of the fireworks and all of this is perfect for your manager's report, so now it's shorter.
There you go.
So would anyone in, a member of the public in City Hall like to speak on this issue? This is authorizing the sale of fireworks within the city limits of Plymouth. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak on this issue? Please press star nine. Okay, council.
I like fireworks.
I like pizza.
I like Asian food.
Yeah.
So, but I think I'm down for it, babe. Thank you ladies for all your hard work.
Okay, I, I'm, this is always a mixed bag for me because every time I see the booth out there, I'm like, and it's always dry grass everywhere, you know, it's, and we are in a horrible, horrible situation. But I must say that Plymouth handles this situation very well. So I think, and it's a large fundraiser for Kate Carson Mountain Men. So I would entertain a motion to approve the sale of fireworks within Plymouth by Kate Carson Mountain Men.
I make a motion to approve sale of fireworks, um, by Kate Carson Mountain Men in Plymouth, that they're already erected. I second that.
Seconded and seconded to approve the sale of fireworks within the city when it's Plymouth by the Kate Carson Mountain Men. And don't miss it. Give, give them some money.
Give them some chinkin'.
Roll call vote, please. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Sin?
Aye.
Councilmember Marissa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Klinebelter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to eight point one, city manager's report. It'll be very brief because she's already told us everything. Sorry, that's, that's, I'm working, sorry.
It's okay.
So, I was just a little excited. I, I just wanted to let everyone know, if you haven't heard from Code Red or if you've ever messaging yet, uh, these stop signs are going in on Mill Street on Tuesday. Um, we're also going to, uh, post notices on all the doors of people on Mill Street and Middle Road Street so that they're aware that that's going to be a new fixture in their neighborhood. Uh, the other thing that I need to mention is, uh, I was just made aware of the S B one approval needing to come through by July first, and that is for, um, street funds. Um, unfortunately, it's going to need to be, uh, council meeting approval. And we were hoping maybe we could, been a, a very short Zoom council meeting in, um, to approve that. If we don't get approved by, uh, July first, then we're not eligible for any of the funds for the year. Uh, I apologize on the short notice. Thanks here, just a little upside down right now. Um, but we did try to pull something together, so, uh, if you choose, we could have that quick special meeting, um, and possibly get that approved so that we can move forward and, and qualify for the funding. Frank, this would not qualify as an, an, an emergency item to add, I don't think so.
Unfortunately, no, I appreciate it. Snap mask the same thing and I would tell, I mean, passionately, no. But I do think there will be like, like Kevin suggested, a quick, all Zoom special meeting next week to do, to, to, to adopt, to, to adopt the resolution.
Yes, resume.
Hopefully that would be, uh, clean enough for the members.
Any, are that's something else, Kathleen? No, that's it for me. I want to thank you very much. Okay, mayor and council members' reports. Want to start, Peter?
Sure. I don't have a whole lot, actually. Um, I do need to kind of address there at the end. I've been trying to get a hold of Apple for like three days. No one's answered. I'm jacked. So I'm like, I don't know if they're starting the opposite anymore or, or what the deal is. I've called several members. One is a cell phone number, it's a two two three number. Sorry, I'll wait. Um, so I had been contacted and I talked to Cat Wayne, about, you know, on Monday, fourth of July. And that's a big day. My kids are down. Sure, to be honest, it was, it was. Uh, but Kathleen let me know that it's contractually their, their day off, which makes sense. That's okay. Well, great. But maybe I was, could try and see if Dr. Director may have even contacted and see if, uh, get that. Get them to get a laugh right out there on Monday if possible, just as special, you know. See it up. Just go back to that. Okay. So that's all.
Thank you, Peter. I also think that, um, whether or not we can do something this year, that it's something to put in our, the back of our minds to include specific dates in the new contract for next year.
Right. That would take care of it, right?
Okay.
Under certain special circumstances, Dave.
I don't know if I can ask this or not ask this or whatever. But I'm, I'm gonna, Frank, stop me if I can.
I will.
Um, and maybe it's not our position and maybe it's more staff's position to figure it out. But I think staff needs something for appreciation, marketing or something. And sometimes we have agendas or
I mean, you're allowed to float that idea in the open air. Uh, but yeah, I mean, if, 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 uh, council wants to, we'll, we'll talk to Kathleen if something needs to come to council later.
Okay.
I just.
That's all I got.
Thank you. This is just then.
Uh, yes, it's, let me put an announcement that tomorrow night, the, uh, the Emerald Art Council is going to have their weekly music event here at McGee Park. Uh, music starts tomorrow night at six o'clock. Uh, and we have arranged to have rotary, sell beer and wine starting, I think, around five o'clock. And Armando's Tacos is also going to be, uh, uh, setting up their, their stand in, in McGee Park as well. And, uh, I believe it goes from six to eight. Uh, they, this is a, they have this function at various locations throughout the county. And tomorrow night is our turn, so looking forward to it. It's going to be warm, but, uh, there'll be plenty of, plenty of beer. Anyway, it'll be a fun time. Hopefully, uh, work is out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember Morrison, and I just want to add, Armando's Tacos are gone. Vice Mayor Ackerman. Okay, I have, um, we went over that if things sort of subsequent change in correspondence or add to the consent counter, so that was one of my things. And I also want to thank staff and appreciate them any way we can. Maybe barbecue in the park or whatever is appropriate for an ice cream social. So, and, you know, it's, it could turn into a meeting group, so the public also meets the staff. So it could go either way, but that would be a good opportunity on a very friendly social engagement. So it's up to, it's your party. So that's all I have for future agenda items. I'm sure I'll come up with something and I'll email it in. So at this time, we are going to close the rest, regular session, adjourn the regular session, and we're going to move into closed session, which means you all have to go.
Bye.
Yeah, bye.
Yes, we're going to break for about five minutes, so we get all of our technology.
Make some right direction.
Yeah.
And then we're able to.
I mean.
Yeah, find two.
What do kids want to do on holiday?
Right.
Yeah.
That would have pretty much.
Yeah. Close on Christmas.
Yeah.
Counsel received information, provided direction that we'll put watch.
Top recorder.
Yes, top recorder.
Turn it off.